I'd like to call the May 7, 2015 work session from County School Board to order. Has everybody had a chance to look over the agenda? The discussion about the agenda? All of it?
Madam Chair, if you would, I would like to, I attended the GSBA Governmental Operations Committee, which discussed legislative positions that the GSBA will put forward in Savannah, proposed by all members. And as our delegate, I attended that on Monday. If I could just have maybe a couple of minutes for a brief overview.
Sure.
Just as a point of information for the rest of members.
Where do you like to start?
Add that, that's 15, and we'll move on to this, this is Act 16.
What point of information for 15?
Yeah, for the Governmental Operations Committee.
When we discuss that, can we discuss some accomplishments and education plans?
We've got two on here, and I guess we can do it on 15. We could talk about some actual commitments and accomplishments. We talked about last week, now we need to come up with some sort of policy about what sort of standards that we're going to be, when we have, to get a big national competition and we can discuss that now, and we've got some. Tonight, what we know, we can kind of figure out what we're going to do there, but we'll discuss it during that time, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Did I get a motion to accept the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor?
You get that mic, great. I do it all.
Mr. Johnson, would you mind giving our education tonight, please?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Bow out here, please. Father God in heaven, thank you for another day we never served before. Bless your people, in Jesus' name, amen.
Has everyone reviewed the minutes from the previous month?
The board of the plates have been consented in for the next meeting.
In a motion to, the right, no, okay, that's right, that's right.
Monthly financial report is the next item on work session. You've been presented the financial report. That shows the end of month fund equity. Mr. Trejo, do you have any comments about that?
It's starting to go down.
Time of year.
We're seeing lower, obviously lower property taxes coming in, and at this time of year, which is the norm. This is where it starts to decline to some fairly low levels, and April, May, June, and actually up through about September before we start to see it come back in October again. So we will have to manage our money well, because it's, the current fund balances, you see it's $7,820,45,52. And that is, if you bring up the comparison, Dr. Miller. That's some $900,000 below where we were a year ago. We were at $3,007,000 a year ago. It's about tracks, it's about even with a little, about $100,000 lower than fiscal 2013, so it seems like we've kind of bounced back and forth between every other year. So we're on one of our down years here, this time.
You know, just to call the incentive, if we did those two years ago, which would have been FY13, now we'd see that again with FY15. There might be a big gap there, but we reflect.
I do have a question, just for my, on the, on the revenue, on the detail, we're at 80, we're about 12 percent short of budget. Is that something that's going to get a little closer toward the end of this fiscal year, but we're not?
We probably even fall a little short, and that's going to be due to the motor vehicle taxes dropping quicker than what we had anticipated them to be dropping, and that's going to continue to go away as we go forward. And a fairly flat real property tax digest, I mean, our real property was pretty level from the previous year, so we're not seeing any uptick as of yet, and we could see maybe a little bit this next year, hopefully, and that'll help us on the real property side. But it's some other fee or piece that's really kind of getting, even though we recouped a lot of, some of that from the TAPT portion that's now going into the property tax revenues, it's not, it's not replacing a dollar for dollar. There are the details from the financial report, we're at 83 percent of the year completed, and you can see down through, we're at 88 percent on that top line, that property taxes, but overall, we are at 75 percent, and a good bit of that is due to the state revenue piece, which will be posted up once we start to close at the end of the year, as you mentioned the accrual piece. We will, that will get trued up with some additional revenues that we'll post in as a part of the closing process. So I expect that to be much better than, obviously, where we're at right now, being about 8 percent below.
Any questions, comments about that?
I just told some interesting news from our committee meeting that I went to Monday. This vote carried, which was Evans County, has requested a change in the fees paid to counties for collected school taxes from a 2.5 percent to 1.5 percent in that carry. So it looks like, and a lot of the larger metro systems were very vocal in their desire to see that commission rate drop by 1 percent. So that'll be an interesting, it's legislation, obviously, but, you know, if we're going to squeeze, let's all squeeze together, I guess, is kind of the takeaway on that.
Interesting.
Point's a point.
Every little bit helps. This sheet shows for the 10 months, our expenditures year-to-date, and we're at 83 percent. For the most part, we are at or under in most categories. Overall, we're at 69 percent, but there will also be, at the end of the year, accruals for expenditures for those payrolls for those 10-month and 11-month employees that will, we will post in at the end of the year, and that will, that will correct for that, and we'll see a much higher expenditures come the end of the year. And this, this shows you here, our assets, our cash money right now is $7,820,638.61, and just go ahead and scroll all the way down through liabilities to $7,820,638, or $2,45,620,245,52 of fund equity. Questions? We have, you can see $43,960,058,27 of revenues, and expenditures of $41,657,565 in eighteen states.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair. Rossin, did the state send all the money back from Rossin?
Yes, sir. And we've gotten every bit of the $3,007,000 that we were supposed to get of low-income money, we've gotten every bit of that already as of probably March of this year.
So, do you see the money coming from that loan?
For?
Osteria cut.
Well, they, they did announce an austerity cut that'll bring back an official $1,505 or so of funding, state funding, that will get, we're still shy about $2,300,000 of austerity that still shows up on our lock and chief if it all gets signed off and is finalized. We haven't seen the official lock and chief yet.
When?
When will we see it? Between now and the end of June, I mean, it just kind of depends when that, when the governor signs, signs off.
Well, if I want to do some fireworks if I was to sign off on it. They are jealous.
It'll be done by the 4th of July.
So that's the only thing you see coming?
Yes, sir. A little bit of an equalization, but only about $300,000 more of equalization money for next year, you know, all told, a little over $2 million more. The problem being is that they've also passed some additional costs down to the districts as well at the same time, so, you know, in one pocket, out the other.
So, Jan?
The increase in the premiums on, on medical insurance were classified, it's $150 a month per employee per month. That's, that's, it's going to be passed down, and that, that's additional $600,000 out of our pocket.
When would that take effect?
That takes effect with July 1, 2015.
This year.
This year, yes.
Yeah, I believe out of the, out of the highly publicized $280,000 in additional revenue that we're going to go to public schools this year, $103 million of that is being removed and put on the backs of the local systems. Does it run a cut of the difference for the?
The TRS is carrying more of a load.
The TRS, local contribution?
And increase? That's right. The TRS local contribution, which is another $405,000 or so effect on us here in Coffee County, because of the percentage going from 13, it's unchanged, to 14, 27 percent. I mean, it's about a 1.1 percent increase of system contribution. Employees' contribution remains the same at 6 percent. So that means all in, 20 percent is going into the TRS for our employees.
How long do you think it's going to go on?
When's it going to go on, I'm sorry?
Take the money from the system.
As long as they can get away with it.
Four more years.
How many more they were?
They're working on a new funding formula that's supposed to roll out FY17, so we're coming up on FY16, and they're saying FY17, the new funding formula, will roll out, which we're hoping will benefit us, but, you know, there's a thought that there'll be, it's in most cases winners and losers, and hopefully, they develop a formula where there's not losers, and certainly, we don't want to be one of them, so that's yet to be seen what that formula looks like.
Now, the reason, if you sound Jamaican, you lose us.
We're definitely in a more challenging situation in the metro there, and so I agree.
They'll be losing, they're going to get what they're supposed to get. Watch.
Next on the agenda, if it's okay with the board, we will place those items on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Award of Distinction, we received notice this week from the Department of Audits that our finance department, after the audit this year, is going to be recognized with an award from the State Department of Audits, and they're going to come down in June and present an award to our finance department. Mr. Trejo, you got anything to say about that? I know Tracy told me about it earlier this week, and they're going to run a press release and so forth, so we thought we'd go ahead and share that with the board.
Does it collect money?
No, no money.
No money, just another nice plaque.
It's recognition for good fiscal management.
Yes, sir. I can't add much more to that, I wish Ms. Young was here, she is attending a conference right now in Savannah, but we really worked at, our group has really worked hard at pulling things together and developing a good schedule and a good effort at, you know, achieving this, it requires early enough submission, no findings, and, you know, a few other particulars. And as you well know, I think you all have gotten copies of the audit reports and financials at this point in time, there were a couple of small management letter items that we still want to clean up on and work at and, you know, keep improving on, but overall, it was a good effort, really good effort by everybody there in the financial area.
Congratulations.
Please, thanks.
And there will be a press release that will be put forward from the State Department, they sent a sample of the press release, and then also, they'll come down in June. So we're going to kind of give y'all a heads up, hope it's good enough news to go ahead and make you aware of the press release. Another piece of that is, and y'all, you and Ms. Young have done a good job of pulling the bookkeepers from the schools together, and having meetings and talking about the management of funds and such. Jan meeting with the principals, I see some of our principals back there who've been involved with the meetings and efforts to make sure that we are certainly being fiscal responsible, so, thank you. Out-of-state travel, we have a couple of out-of-state travel requests. The first being the 21st Century Learning Center Group, the Boys and Girls Club Group, will be going to the Jacksonville Zoo on the 18th. And then also, we have the 4H Group, that will be going to the Jacksonville Zoo on the 28th of this month, and then the Boys and Girls Club will be going on the 18th of June. Is there anything to add to that, Ms. Hodge?
By the way, more after school is out, it's summer programming, and it's a great opportunity for both groups to go.
I will say, I went to the 4H Awards Ceremony a couple of nights ago, beautiful ceremony, they have tremendous programming for young people. There were probably at least 100 students there, who were involved in the programs throughout the years.
It's great.
Really active group, 4H, as well as Boys and Girls Club. All right, so that's the out-of-state travel. RISA contract. Madam Chair, we are presenting the contract from RISA for our funding that we provide to the RISA. This is the same amount of funding we've been providing to the RISA since 1992, so our, our funding amount has stayed consistent since 1992 with RISA. And we see that we agreed to membership fees of $54,364. If there's no questions or concerns, you'll place that on the consent agenda?
What exactly do we get, what does this provide?
They provide training for teachers, administrators, support staff, many different types of training. Can y'all explain on what they provide?
There are, of course, the, from the board level, superintendent level on down, monthly meetings with our Board of Directors, of course, with superintendents, with our curriculum folks, provide tons of professional learning, they provide support for teachers and leave and slows, of course, certifications, they help us get a gifted certification, they're all kinds of certifications.
When you say, when they, when they get the certification, do the teachers have to pay for it once we, or is that covered with the money, is that, is paid to them, how does that work?
It's not covered by RISA, they provide the training.
The opportunity, okay.
They also support the Harold Learning Center, which is our, some of our most, you know, challenges, attend and do a wonderful job. The Harold Learning Center, they, they had a prom this year, and they had the animals as part of the programming in the, in the school that they have, animals that they raise and such, just really an impressive program, Harold Learning Center, and the RISA supports that, they, they're the fiscal agent for Harold Learning Center.
They offer some shared services on purchasing as well, so.
They do.
They do, co-op type purchasing as a group.
Cuffing machines?
So we basically recoup the, we basically recoup the fee through savings and purchases.
Has our face machine, cuffing machine, what kind of shape it is?
I have to defer to Mr. Trejo on that.
I guess, no news is good news, though. Mr. Johnson, they, we've replaced a good number of them in the past three or four years. When we get requests from schools, we'll look at the age of the existing machine, and what kind of problems we're having as far as maintenance and upkeep on those machines, and then we'll push forward. And we're getting some very competitive pricing, we're putting cannons at this time in, and they're doing, holding up very well, doing really well for us, so we'll continue that process as machines age out and they become a maintenance issue, we will continue to replace those using swap's money.
Well, that's my next one. In my opinion, to me, we should just purchase our own, and when they tear up, we can call people in to fix them.
That's, that's what we do.
You say every three years, we cycle them out?
Well, not necessarily, I mean, there, there have been some we've kept as long as five years, but we begin to see, in year four and five, you'll begin to see an increased level of maintenance required on those machines, they, they tend to not last long with all the mechanics in.
Who pays for that?
We do, we end up paying for it. Parts primarily because we do pay a per copy click leasing, it's not really a lease, it's a maintenance fee that we pay, and we call them out as needed, and they, they respond very quickly and come out and make the necessary repairs so that machines aren't down too very long. And most schools have at least two machines so that, you know, they're not completely out of the.
Paper too, right?
I'm sorry.
Can we buy a paper too?
No, we buy the paper, in fact, we buy a good bit of our paper from the RISA. They get a very, we get a very good price buying it in truckloads.
How about the tissue, paper towel?
That's all supplied by our custodial services.
Okay, I remember years ago, RISA did take care of it.
Yeah.
And that changed?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are there any other questions, concerns about RISA? Madam Chair, we'll place that on the consent agenda. And I do point out that that's the same amount that we've been paying since 92, so they've remained fairly conservative. Satilla Regional Library, we had received a letter from the library director last month, and we discussed the letter at our last board meeting, in reference to a request for additional funding for Satilla Regional Library. The Satilla Regional Library is requesting a $9,000 annual increase, $9,800 increase in what we contribute. We currently contribute $63,133 to the Pulp Library, which is, I think, a fair contribution. And if you have those numbers in front of you, Mike, I want to make sure, Tracy gave me that number, 63,000, 133.
That sounds correct.
If you can verify, I just want to make sure that number is correct. If you can access it.
I might take a minute here.
But, at this point, they've also asked the city and the county to increase their contribution, I'm not sure if the city and county is going to increase their contribution. What I was going to recommend tonight is, is we sustain our current level of funding at 63,000?
Excuse me, Dr. Lee, it's 63,133.
All right, that we just continue to fund the Satilla Regional Library at the same amount of 63,133 dollars, and correspond with the library in regards to if they will pursue fundraising efforts or whatnot, we certainly support in the efforts that they have to continue to fund the same amount, which is a, when you look at our contribution to the RISA, which is 53,000, was that correct, 54,000, our contribution to Satilla Regional is 63,000. At this point, that's my recommendation, to continue to fund it as we.
What we're giving them now is a very fair amount, you know, I don't, you know, my whole issue with the $9,800 is that, you know, we're already giving $60,000,000, and they want to get some more funding to give their people a raise, which I appreciate, but, you know, we're telling our people, we can't give them a raise, we're, you know, we will always take funding. And I just don't see, you know, if we're sitting there saying we can't give our people a raise, I just don't see, well, we can come up with money and get somebody else to get some there. It's my opinion.
Well, I'm satisfied with holding steady with what we're contributing, and we find that the city and county contribute more in the future than we may want to revisit and stay consistent with what the other government agencies are doing.
Now, this question, Mr. Mayor, how much does the county and the city pay, do you have that information?
I don't have that.
The letter's got an in-kind contribution from the city in furnishing utilities, that they valued at about $35,000, only in the letter. And then it's got us. It simply, it simply notes that they've requested 9,800 from us, and the county didn't say that the county's actually agreed by them, so.
My recommendation is to fund this, this year, the Pulp Library at 63,133 dollars. There's no other discussion, the next item on the agenda is bids. We have painting bids, we're going to paint three schools this summer, West Green Elementary, Ambrose Elementary, and Indian Creek Elementary, and you see the bid tallies in the attachment with the low bidder being ICS Incorporated, they're the same outfit that painted Eastside and George Washington Carver last summer, and we were, we were very satisfied with the outcome of both of those jobs, so.
Don't nod if you're not satisfied, don't, hold back, I know there were a few callbacks on some paint curing concerns, I know at Eastside we have some, all right. Doctor Tucker was here.
We've got two principal schools.
I know, we, we have both schools that got painted last year.
Anything y'all might shed a light on, was it?
There were a few paint curing issues over the existing paint, had something to do with the base that was there and the paint that were applied, but they did come back and correct.
That's your envelope, they were responsive to. Mr. Youngblood, were they responsive to, to?
Yeah, they went above and beyond what they needed to do to correct and get it right.
We've got Mr. Youngblood here tonight to answer any questions or add any commentary. You have anything to add to this discussion, Mr. Youngblood?
I mean, they, uh, it cost them a little bit of time last year when they run into that issue, which was paint had not adhered to years in before. So, I mean, they went back and we've got it, wrote in our specs now clearly that they're to inspect it and make sure that if they have to do that, that it's no problem. You know, that they've got that built in. But other than that, I mean, they were like, uh, a little bit out of sync with the time that they told us, but we were fine over that.
Where are they from?
Swanee, Swanee, Georgia.
Metro Georgia.
Georgia, Swanee, Georgia.
I have a question as well.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Are we going to use local contractor for some of these jobs?
You see the, the, uh, low bid is ICS. We did have a local contractor that bid on the job. And I think that Mr. Youngblood has been in contact with the local contractor. Mr. Travis has been talking with ICS. And, uh, we are working to see if there is a way that, uh, a local contractor could get one of the jobs. Mr. Travis, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, sir. Uh, I heard back from, um, the owner of ICS, uh, earlier today. And in light of trying to work with and possibly have a local contractor, he's willing to give up West Green Elementary. And if we can work it out with Gilliard to do that, uh, job for us at the same rate as what ICS bid on it, then, um, then that, that's what we would do. Is, is allow Gilliard to do West Green and then ICS would do Ambrose and Indian Creek.
That's all I have. No, we against the call.
Yeah, if we can work it out with, with Gilliard paying and they're willing to do that, um, that's what we'll do. If not, then ICS will get the whole, we'll get the whole job is what we would recommend.
And ICS is kind of in the driver's seat, it's able to low bid, but if they are willing to work with us on it and, uh, back off on, on one of the projects. So we think we've got it worked out, Mr. Johnson.
If it don't happen, I'll let you let us know.
Yes, sir.
You know, I know what to do.
But Gill, Gilliard does have the, I mean, they're basically being given the option to match the, the quote.
Yes, sir.
To keep the business.
What's the term they, they want to do?
What we've instructed to ICS, what, when, in my conversation with him, when, when I send him con, uh, these contracts and terms and conditions, there will also be, uh, we, we said that he had to be out of the schools by June the thirtieth so that we could get his last three schools cleaned up, dirty, the line, script and wax. To include a penalty clause within that contract, should he exceed the June thirty day, we would charge him a thousand dollars a day, five hundred dollars a day, something in that range as a penalty for not, not, not meeting that deadline.
Is this out of general fund or?
East Fox.
East Fox, that allows we, we can repaint with East Fox.
That's right. And Jimmy, did you have anything to add to any of that? I know that you, you had a, uh, another meeting to get to and we appreciate you being here.
Other than that, I mean, you know, we've got carpet, that's one of the reasons we've got the deadline going down at, uh, on the twenty-ninth, uh, or thirtieth of June. So that we've got carpet that's being put down in two of these schools also, which is West Green and Ambrose. And some rooms to get that cleared up where that they have all how and classroom versus carpet and stuff.
We're going to be meeting with Dr. Monford and Mr. Travis and Jimmy and itself and reviewing a five-year facility plan in preparation for next summer. And, you know, what schools, uh, would be in order for next summer, so.
Mr. World, while Jimmy here, I let ask a question. How's the middle school coming along with the project?
The middle school?
Yeah.
On.
The auditorium.
Oh, it's finished, just completed? Yes, sir.
You, you pleased with it?
Yes, sir.
It's awesome.
It's, it's nice.
How about you, Ms. Bear?
Very pleased.
Were they able to address that poppin' that was part of the, this audio?
Yeah, they, they came in and one of their electronics engineers or whatever adjusted the gain on it on the board and it fixed that problem.
Delighted?
Great, it's really nice.
We did send a group, uh, Dr. Monford, uh, Mr. Youngblood and Ms. Travis went this past week to Perry and to, uh, Bangris. And looked at ag barns. And, uh, so then we get, if y'all want to share any of that, I don't know.
We and, uh, Michael Berry and Jamie Stodgill and Big Suddles went with Southside Architect and, uh, went to different places and we'd seen one that we liked. And next week was Vic and Jamie and Mike and myself are supposed to sit down and sort of do a little rough sketch. And then we'll put it back on the table and see if it's going to work for what we need to be placed at the middle school.
Did y'all get to go to the fishing museum?
Go what?
Did y'all get to go to the fishing museum in Perry, Mike?
And, uh, we didn't have time. We went to two schools, one was in Perry, that was pretty interesting.
All right, are there any other comments about the paint bids? All right, it's, uh, pleasing to the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda and vote on that with the understanding that we will work with ICS on the West Green and Gilliard to see if, uh, we can negotiate that. Bus purchase. We've got a, uh, quote from Gancy Bus Sales. This is on the state contract price for five buses. Ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars per bus. These are eighty-seven passenger buses. We're asking the board to approve the purchase of five new buses. They should be in time for school start.
If we can get the order placed, I think Mr. Gilliard said that we can get those delivered sometime in July.
Can we just sell some buses too?
We did, yes, ma'am.
Have we looked at this, just out of curiosity, have we looked at anything as far as like the natural gas stuff? Does the city's got that plant now? Is that?
Um, we started to look at that at one time when they were first under construction. And I think when diesel was at a much higher price, if the economics looked better, it's, it cost, the initial upfront cost of a CMG bus is pretty high. It's probably, uh, about a third more upfront.
I think that, that, I don't understand.
I just didn't know if we had looked at that and it's been higher or was that? We would wear the bus out before we saw any return on savings.
I feel right so.
Well, hundreds of years. All right. If there's no questions about the bus bids, we will place this on.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Lee, on that attachment, there should also be the cost of the, uh, installation of the air conditioning as well. You'll scroll all the way down, Dr. Miller, right there. It's a ten-six per, per bus. So that would be another fifty, fifty-some thousand.
Cameras included?
Yes, sir.
Two ways and three ways? I know we talked about three ways, one in the middle, back and front.
I think it's front, middle, it's, I don't know.
Buddy has told me there's front, middle and back, there's three cameras in.
The last group I've seen have had three. I think that's the all.
I mean, did you say three? And then one on the driver?
Yes, sir.
That's what I like to see. I don't get all the evidence. He says, she says, get kinder with me. I want to know.
It's, uh, is there any other, any other details about the bus bids? All right, if it's, uh, please, the board will place that on the agenda for regular being.
So all five are, all five are air-conditioned and that's an additional to ten thousand per bus?
That's right. And I tell you, we have a nice fleet of buses. If you look at, at our buses, uh, so, all of our units are air-conditioned, uh, which is really a commitment to our kids and making sure that they have a comfortable ride to school and a comfortable ride home, and that's important. So, uh, I think, uh, it's something that we can be proud of.
One more question, Mr. World. Do you see, are we seeing a dividend on that bus bill? We changed it over three years ago. Are we seeing an increase?
It's a little difficult to really evaluate because we're in a totally different situation right now with the number of field trips with, uh, just, you know, uh, we, we'd have to do some analysis on it to see. I mean, there was some definite benefit to it that we saw early on, uh, that we, I think we reported, uh, about a year out after making that conversion. But we haven't looked, revisited that in a while. We can do that.
Dr. Lee?
Yes, sir.
I would like to see where the increase is.
What we, we do know is that we're, we're operating with eighteen fewer drivers.
Yes, sir.
Was that big correct?
That's correct.
And with the increase in the local share on health insurance and it was really a cost avoidance. With eighteen fewer employees, that's very significant. But, uh, we certainly work on something and report that.
Could you take a moment and explain to the public what a consent agenda is?
The consent agenda is, uh, something that the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools recommended that we use, uh, probably four years ago, five years ago, when SACs came in and conducted, uh, their monitoring here and made recommendations. Uh, one of the recommendations was that we use a consent agenda. And a consent agenda means that we will discuss our business in a work session and, uh, have discussion on any of the agenda items and, uh, any debate that we need to have or whatnot. And, uh, if the board can come to consensus and agrees with the item and is willing to vote to approve the item, then we place it on what is called the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is where we will bundle, if you will, uh, those items together on the regular board meeting agenda. And then when we get to that on the regular board meeting agenda, uh, the board will just take one vote on all those items that are bundled together. And, uh, so it keeps us from having to take separate votes on items as we move through the agenda. When we get the consent agenda, if the board agrees with all those items, then you just take one vote to approve the consent agenda and move on. So it's, it's a, uh, a tool to make meetings go more smoothly. And that's the whole intent and that was the intent from the, the SACs recommendation. If you remember at that time, or they felt like we needed to approve our meetings. And so this was a tool to help us do that.
Thank you. But if there is an item that needs further discussion, we can take it off and set it aside to vote on separately.
That's right, yes, ma'am. All right. Habitudes. This is a program, uh, that we've been looking at for a couple of years. It's, uh, described as growing leaders and we have a proposal that was included on this agenda. And, uh, in our last SACs review last year, last spring, there were two recommendations. The first required action, and these are not recommendations, these are required actions. The first was that we design and implement a comprehensive system-wide student advocacy program. When we talk about advocacy, we're talking about adults within the building advocating for individual students. And, uh, as part of that advocacy program that we are developing, we've identified something called Habitudes. Habitudes was developed by a gentleman named Tim Elmore. And Tim Elmore worked with an author named John Maxwell. John Maxwell, for any of you who've read any of his leadership work, uh, is an author of numerous leadership books that are used in education, in business. But Tim Elmore worked with John Maxwell, uh, early in his career. And then he eventually broke away from John Maxwell and started, uh, his own leadership, uh, programming. And that's called Habitudes. He's worked with, uh, Gwinnett County Schools, Cobb County Schools, Fayette, uh, the entire state of, I think it's Nebraska, has adopted his work as part of their, uh, career technical education program. Was it Nebraska Principal Jeller in the back? Do y'all remember what state it was that adopted his work statewide? Has adopted the work statewide and they're using it in all of their schools in that state. I talked with a superintendent who worked in Marietta City and she was telling me about the difference it made with their students there. The idea is to teach young people how to be leaders and to teach them how to lead other young people and be advocates for other young people and to, uh, to work together. And we feel like that if we train our young people up, we train our sixth graders, our seventh graders, our eighth graders, our ninth graders, our tenth graders, eleventh, twelfth, on how to work together, on how to be a team, on how to advocate for other students, uh, that ultimately we'll have, uh, more successful students and we'll see better outcomes. So that's the goal, is to develop a program in which our students are prepared to, to be leaders. And surveying on business and industry community, they talk a lot about soft skills. Yes, sir. No, sir. Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am. Getting to work on time, doing what you're supposed to do when you get there. Looking people in the eye, shaking their hand, treating them with respect. And that's what this is all about, developing soft skills, developing type of young people that we want working in our local industries and businesses, attending our colleges. So, uh, we've got some principals here. If y'all can provide any commentary, uh, Dr. Cummings, I know you attended, and Dr. Banks, and Ms. Barry, and we've got Mr. Gillis. This is initiative for our secondary students, uh, grade six through twelve.
I'll, go ahead, you go ahead and I'm gonna share the book.
Thank you, Dr. Lee, sir, board. I think it's a good program because what I think it provides from sixth through twelve is some common language. You know, common, common lessons. We already have a advisement theory, but it's kind of different by grade level and by school. What this does, it brings everything together. So a student starting in the sixth grade with this program would have some of the lessons that would carry over all the way through the rest of their time in high school. And one of the things that I think is vital for young people is learning how to overcome obstacles, uh, being diligent in their efforts, uh, treating each other with respect, some of the same things that Dr. Lee's already talked about. And again, you know, some of our students already have those types of qualities and some don't. And I think given an opportunity with this curriculum and providing these lessons throughout the school year, I think it'd be very, very beneficial to the school and to the school and the students and, and to our community. Because again, we understand that one of the biggest challenges we face is helping young people, oh, learning how to overcome obstacles and developing good habits. Good habits build good character. And so if, if you have good character, you're going to be able to do the things that, you know, we like you to do and things are going to help you be successful. And the common language, I think, is vital because you're hearing the same thing throughout your time from the sixth grade on through, you know, the rest of your time at the county school system. And so I think it's something that's worthwhile. You know, we, we are character teachers because we have many times with some students coming in the gap that they may not be receiving in other places. And I think this program, uh, goes very, very far in doing that. So I think it's something that we're certainly interested in and we're certainly ready to move forward on at the building level, uh, again, to help a particular population. again, to help a particular population. Well, they help all our students, but some of them certainly help more than others. So I know the teachers and the staff at Coffin High School is something that we're excited about and looking forward to.
Mary, did you have anything to add?
The books that I shared that Miss World has and that poster kind of sums it up. It kind of gives you a succinct picture of the overall program, the iceberg, that shows that what folks see about you, that's only 10%, that your character, that 90% under the word is what we're to say at the Titanic, and that's basically what sinks the ship. And they define our character as the sum of your self-discipline, emotional security, your core values and identity. And that is something, just like piggybacking off what Dr. Cummings said, is what our students need and having that common language throughout that secondary program. I bought the series of books, and then they recommended that, I'm sorry, middle school begin with that first book that you have. It has the iceberg in it, and start as a common theme, and just look at that. It just... The pictures will be displayed around the school, so it's going to be a mindset. They're going to see it visually, and it's going to be up and around, and that iceberg thing kind of says it all.
Who's going to teach it?
So y'all attended a presentation or actual course or...
Well, that in-depth training will be, I think they have one this summer, but we went to an overview. We were engaged, so the students are going to be engaged. If they were as engaged as much as we were, we played a family youth session where we got to go up on stage and be engaged and do some things to share. It really sunk in. I think that this program will be that for our students, but it does have options. Where this, what I'm holding in my hand is actually a teacher's guide that's already prepared. The teachers don't have to come up with anything. This is, they can have that, which is paper pencil, or there is also a video series on CD that's already embedded, an electronic version. So the teachers don't have any prep time. It will be, like he talked about his advisement, we have that at the middle school only twice a month now. We're going to have it more so beginning next year.
If one of the takeaways on the program improved discipline in schools?
Yes, sir.
By the self-discipline techniques the kids learn, is that what the ultimate effort is here?
That is the goal. It's a huge character education. Keep giving kids alternative to react to situations. And, you know, again, give them a common language starting in the sixth grade all the way through. But to go back and to teach it as Mr. Johnson's question, it's already in our advisement groups. We already have them. We have advisement every Tuesday unless something comes along that we have to reschedule. But that would be a piece of it. You know, we're approaching it. It's not something else for teachers to do in terms of... Because it's like Ms. Berry said, it's very little prep time, and we're looking at doing it through electronic format. So, you know, turn this smart board on, we'll have the workbooks to go along with it. And a lot of it is imagery, giving students a picture, a visual picture of what the lesson is all about. And it's not, you don't have to do it every week. It's a certain number of lessons, but we'll have time to get them on, get those lessons completed throughout the school year, and we'll have those visual reminders, you know, throughout the building to try to bring everything together, but we're trying to get students to treat each other with respect and develop their own what's called self-efficacy, where they're going to be responsible with their own behavior.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, ma'am. Is it mandatory for each kid?
Yes, it'll be part of the advisement group, and at the high school, we got every student that has an advisement period, so everyone will be going through. Yes, sir.
So, uh... Dr. Lee's question. Since we are Career Academy system now?
Yes, sir.
Charter.
Charter school, I mean.
Yes, sir.
Know what I'm talking about. Since we are system charter, can we go outside and take some of the, some of the work off the teachers?
Yes, sir. We try to minimize as much as possible. You know, we don't want to just add something to add it. We want to make sure if we're doing something that it's benefiting students, you know. And at the end of the day, that's what we have to ask ourselves. Is it good for students?
Oh, it depends on who teaches.
That's, you know, what we have to look at.
It looks, it really does look like it's laid out well for, a teacher could take this up and he's got the questions and the things that go with it, that it would, it wouldn't really be, it'd actually give them some, a plan to go about when they have that time.
Well, I understand. I can read this, or I will get one of these books.
Yes, we're going to put a book in every child's hand, grade six through 12.
They can read it themselves as well.
Yeah, that's, that's our, our plan is to do it right, and to put a book in every child's hand and give every teacher a resource pack, just like we would a textbook at option. We're going to adopt a book for every child and a teacher resource kit for every teacher so that it's something that they don't have to make something up.
I like it. It looks good. Yeah, I think you could do a lot with this. My concern is that, well, before I have my concern, I want to ask you, what common language are you talking about?
Well, it's just like some of the, you know, I haven't had a chance to go through the old curriculum, but what I can understand is pretty consistent as they're coming through the program. And you start losing little buzzwords, you know, and to help students redirect their behavior and address situations. Like one of the things Ms. Berry said was like with the iceberg, you know, a lot of students, middle school and especially high school too, they're most, are so caught up in what other people think of them, you know, how the people see them visually, and helping them understand that's only a very, very small part of who you are. So, again, that piece of helping them develop their own self-worth, you know, those types of things. And, you know, so those types of lessons are a common theme, you know, throughout this curriculum. And just develop some common themes and help students, you know, again, how do you address each other? How do you treat each other? How do you treat authority? How do you address situations? How do you handle adversity? And start giving them some concrete examples of some ways in which to do that. And so many times...
I think that's great. I just, I just didn't know if there was like key words that, and you probably haven't had a chance to look at it in depth enough. I was just wondering if anybody had, knew what some of the code words.
Can I say one thing about Habitudes from the literature that I've read? When you look at the dynamics of it, you look at positive behavior support, it's all aligned to get cohesion on your campus. Make students advocates of each other, not just the adults being advocates of students, but that the students being advocates for each other as far as their peer relations on the campus. Another thing I read was about bullying. Looking to the Habitudes curriculum a little deeper, it said once kids take ownership of where they're at and where they're going with the transitional phase from the middle school coming up to ninth grade and then going on to Coffin High School, next year, when we roll out the program, we're going to pretty much have the same curriculum at the middle school campus, our campus, and at Coffin High School. Then the following year, we build upon where we at to make everyone in a transitional phase to get better and better as they approach 12th grade at Coffin High School. So from what I've seen and what I can tell and what I've read on Habitudes, it gives, it gives all the students an opportunity to have ownership, not only of their school, but where they're going to be headed with the academic as well as the extracurricular activities that they engage in from one year in and one year out. So I think it's going to be a great thing for Coffin County. At the freshman campus, we want to enroll it into our Trojan Block, our system that we have on Tuesdays, on Tuesdays at 30 minutes, Trojan Block, so that's where we're going to roll out the curriculum on the freshman campus. Every Tuesday or every other Tuesday, we're going to address certain things that we're going to teach to the kids. So I think it will be a better thing for the whole county as a whole, not only for the aspect of learning at the school level, but when they leave Coffin High School system, when they leave Coffin County in general. If we look at our mission, destination, graduation, college, career and life, then this is going to give kids a better opportunity to have a better life, and I think that's what it's all about.
Oh, yeah. I agree with you totally, and I think that looks like a good series. I'd like to see the possibility of starting it a little earlier in the elementary levels when you teach kids. Please, thank you. Excuse me, you know, instead of walking down the hallway and bumping into somebody and rearing back like they do, they're so instilled in saying, "Excuse me," you know. You know, when you grow up like that and when you bump into a mannequin in a store, you're saying, "Excuse me," to a mannequin. It's just, because it's just instilled in you. And that's where we've got, I feel very strongly about, in the elementary is we've got to, we've got to really incorporate that, and that's going to come, that's got to come from the school itself, that, you know, the climate that is instilled at that school and how you want to direct your children. But I think that if you, especially if we start this in the elementaries with those just basic, basic things that you would, most people do with their children, that some people, that some kids aren't getting, then they get into the middle and high school with this, and it would just be super.
That was the idea. We're going to do something targeting K-5, but this really targets 612. So the language is such.
But it's got to be instilled early.
Oh, I agree. I agree with you. So, and even, I know that Scott Gillis is here, Mr. Gillis from Career Academy. The whole idea is whether they attend the ninth grade, go to Career Academy, whether they go to Coffin High, whatever school they're at, even alternative. We have an alternative school director here. They'll be using Habitudes here, but no matter where a student's at, grade six through 12, they're going to have that common language that's positive that we're using throughout the organization.
Okay. Dr. Lee, Ms. World, if I might add, there's also a faith-based component of this program that we're hoping will transfer over into some of the churches and to the youth programs, and that would create even a better transition, you know, from school to church to home, involve the community in that way.
But anyways, this is the Habitudes program that we're asking board to approve, purchasing $32,000 is what the proposal is.
I would, I would like to, um... The money, I think it's a good expenditure, but I would, I would like to know that we're going to, that we are, what we're going to do in the primary grades before we... They have to have, they have to have a base before you throw this out. Anything you do is going to be good, and it will reach some, but I just feel like we'll reach a lot more if we have a training in the, in the elementary, and I'd like to know what that was going to be before I would spend the money on this. I've seen too many programs come and go that we've spent money on. You got to have, it's just like teaching math or reading. You got to have that, you got to have that base first. This is a great program, but you've got to have something to build on.
This be a spotlight?
Yes, sir.
Got a textbook?
Yes.
So is this not, can this be a separate item? Because I'd like to discuss this all morning.
All right. Moving on, we've got the uniform survey. We have a survey that was conducted this past week. Ms. Evans, you want, Dr. Evans, to expand on the survey?
Explain what we've got here. We created the survey a couple of days after the last meeting at your request, and this, keep in mind, this is just a snapshot of this survey at current time. And there's only been a little less than 2,000 people, students and parents and teachers all combined to take the survey at this point, and when you look at system-wide, we've probably got 14,000 parents and 7,600 students. So this is just a very small number of people that have taken the survey. But just to let you see, there were three questions. The first one identified the role. They're either a student, a parent, a guardian, or a school system employee. This will help us be able to sort the data into those categories. And then they were to identify the school that they were at, their child was at or they worked at. And then the third question was simply, are you in favor of school uniforms, yes or no? So what you see on this first sheet is all of the respondents that have taken the survey at this point in time. The survey is open until the end of May, or we can keep it open as long as we want to. But principals have been encouraged to get the surveys completed during their end-of-the-year honors programs and activities, as parents will be coming to the schools in droves at that time so that we can get more people to answer the survey. So overall, looking at all the population that have taken the survey, you're at 40.27% yes for uniforms and 59.73% no. The next page breaks it down into, I separated it by students only, 100% of the students, and then on the right side, you see parents only, and if you scroll on down, the schools again are identified. And if you get to that third question there, Chan, you see that the students that have taken the survey are 74.64% against uniforms and 25.36% for the uniforms. Looking over on the right side at the parents with that same question, you've got 58.94% with a yes and 41.06% with a no.
Yes, we should be listening to.
Well, I knew that it would be interesting to be able to sort the data in all ways, and we can do that. Whenever we decide to end the survey, we'll be able to sort it by schools. I'm sure the schools will, and the school governance councils may want to see this information specific for their school, and we can sort it in that manner, however we need to sort it. So that's what we have at this point in time.
Ms. World, at some point, we're going to put it to a vote, and we're helping to decide. That's what I'm looking at.
I'm still, the question two, go back, the question two. No. Okay. So you go ahead. Okay, can I see the...
That's all, that page is all responses everybody's to get.
We did the survey last year.
Question three is on the right side. If you look, all three questions is on one page. And the next page is split into columns.
Well, I got a question, Ms. World. So now, students, not their own clothes. I thought the parents not buying.
They never in my house.
I don't really want to know what children think.
How about I add something to that? We did this survey last year at the middle school. It was mentioned one time in the press, that we wanted to do it at the middle school before we're doing it, to have more current data, but the results that Dr. Evans just showed overall, the students were against it, and the parent groups, that included parents, my school governance council, and my faculty were in favor of it.
You can say if they have a telephone, students are.
And sometimes they'll hack into their parents' too, so you don't care.
That's one of my reasons about parents. I don't know. Us, though, I don't know. I have other parents too. I mean, I did my own survey. 95% say uniform.
So where are we going with this now? We're still accumulating?
It's still, the principals have been encouraged to continue to get survey responses the next couple of weeks as they have their honors days and activities, and I need to put a paper survey out there for them to be able to collect real quickly, and then we can tally those by school and put them in the system so that it can sort for us.
And you're going to keep the survey open through?
I figure by the time school goes out, you know, it'll kind of die out because they won't have access or they'll forget about it, but whenever you tell them to close it, we can close it.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, world.
Any other comments about the uniform survey?
Yes. At some point, we, as a system, can't let children tell you what to do. Where I come from, you didn't tell my mother, you want to go do nothing, you didn't like nothing, whatever she cooked and what she ate, and you go home. That's the problem now in this system. The whole United States of America, children telling wrong people what to do. At some point, who raising the kids? I thought the parents. The parents say they want it. That's all I'm concerned about. If they come out and say, "We don't want it," that's where I'll vote. But until then, I don't really want no children got to say. I don't. So when it comes to a vote, I'll vote in favor of uniforms. That's what I'm saying.
We will continue surveying, and next board meeting, we'll ask more survey results.
Is there a... I noticed on the, on the parent portal portion, it was only 513 responses. I know we've got more parents and grownups in the system than that.
Right. That's why I said that's only a very small number that you're looking at. We've got to try to get...
Other, 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 how, they, they can only log in once? Is that right? Or is it, how many times can somebody log in?
Well, at the computers, we, at, at the schools, we have it on the desktop, so that parents can just line up and take it, you know, more than one time on that same computer. But the, you know, there's no way to know if somebody goes in there and takes the survey fifty times.
We can restrict it to one attempt per IP address, but families taking it off-site that have multiple children, we didn't enable that feature, because they would only be able to.
It's on Facebook. It's going around on Facebook as well.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. And, um, I shared it, but then I, I, I took it, and then I took it again, and then I took it again, just to see if it was, I mean, cause I was just wondering, well, you know, is this gonna give us an accurate count or not? So, three of those votes, I'm not telling you which way it is, are mine, so.
Well, I can, I can go in and set it so that it can only be taken once on a computer, but that limits access at the schools, when you've got parents coming in there and you've got labs.
Like, I guess, that's my point, is, 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 is it being communicated that parents, I guess on the outreach level, to, to get the information, you know, to get a good, to get a good final result, you know, that, that the schools and the governing councils can actually act on. I mean, if someone can sit there and load as many votes, yes or no?
Well, we're gonna keep it internal.
Right. That's the reason we just posted on our general website and on our Facebook page, we figured, well, it's distributed from the schools.
Well, did my votes count? I mean.
Yes.
I just, I should know if they would go in from that or not.
If you had the link and you were able to take the survey, it's in there.
And we're probably gonna do it during our honor phase, which was like.
We really want to join our, our real parents, not just somebody out in the local neighborhood decides they want to vote. You know what I mean? It needs to be the real parents.
I agree.
Because if you think, we had five hundred and thirty-one votes on here from parents, and I say it like that because who knows who it could really be, uh, but we've probably got at least ten thousand parents. So five hundred and thirty-one out of ten thousand is not, is not, that, ten thousand's a low number, but I'm saying a lot of.
And three of them are men.
Families, yeah, so.
But not the least. In Lake Park, Georgia, they passed the sale of alcohol thirteen to twelve. They wanted to vote. So what are we gonna vote about, the parents or students?
Well, we're gonna use this information and give it to y'all, and let you look at it, and, and decide how you wanna use it, and when we're gonna use it at the school levels. I think this is ultimately a school level. They need to have a lot of input through their school governing councils. We are a charter system. I think the sphere of the charter system is that these type of decisions are, are heavily weighted at the school level, and, and that they certainly should have a lot of input into what we do.
What's your take on it? What you, what you going?
Well, you know, I, when I look at the survey and you look at the results, you see that, uh, yes, a majority of parents voted in favor, but then there's also around forty-one percent that voted not in favor of it. So you've got a pretty close to fifty-fifty split on how people feel about it, and personally, I would wanna see a clear majority, an overwhelming majority, uh, in either direction to have a strong opinion about it, because, you know, I, I'm sure, certain there'll be some who, who are very much against it, and there'll be some who are very much for it.
Well, you, one of the data points you'd be able to drill down to would be per school, yes or no?
Yes.
As well, we're just not seeing that tonight.
Well, they have to slate the school.
I understand that, but we're not seeing that tonight. We're just seeing the total yes or nos. We're not seeing.
Right, yeah, I've not separated the entire survey that I can.
You could, cause I think that would be incre, I mean, I, where that school governing council piece comes in, is, if we've got some schools that their, their families want that for that school overwhelmingly, then that's something that.
That school.
That, that school needs to get behind, the, the school administrator and the, and everyone, everyone involved in that community. But, but, yeah, for us to sit up here in carte blanche, go, kaboom, you know, we're gonna, then we gotta pick out colors, and, no, we're not. We can't even get the church piece right. I've been on that committee before, I don't wanna be on that committee again.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. World. Dr. Murphy, could you read the dress code for me? Do you have your book?
I don't have one, I should though. I didn't, I didn't have a handbook for this.
Somebody, you know, never read on the dress code what it is?
It's a lot, too.
I just wanna know what it is.
Dress code for?
The system.
Student dress code. Dress code applies to all students at schools and school activities. In order to maintain an appropriate climate for learning, the following dress code has been established for Coffey County school system. The administration reserves right to add and delete to the present dress code as being necessary to maintain appropriate and modest dress. Clothing should be appropriate for the occasion, in good taste, and in good condition. While the administration recognizes the individuality of each student and does not wish to stifle individual taste, we must always remember our primary mission is to educate, not to provide a forum for the latest fads. Clothing and/or adornment that attracts undue attention and detracts from the academic climate of the classroom cannot and will not be allowed. Students should remain in dress code as long as he or she is on the campus. Decency is the key to proper school dress. Good hygiene and grooming habits are expected. Student dress code, one, shirts with cleavage or shoulders exposed are not permitted. Recommended necklines are crew polo and collared shirts. Two, shirts or pants must cover midriff completely when arms are raised or when sitting down, boys and girls. Three, sleeveless tops must have enough material to cover the area from neck to shoulder. Spaghetti straps and tank tops are not acceptable. Underarmits, bra straps, or bras should not be visible, girls. Shirts that hang, shirts that hang lower than the front and back pockets of your pants must be tucked in at all times. Rolling shirts under to show pockets instead of tucking in shirts will not be permitted, boys and girls. Pants must be worn at the natural waistline. They cannot be poorly fitted or oversized and baggy so as to allow sagging of the pants, boys. Seven, short skirts and dresses must not be shorter than two and a half to three inches from above the knee in front or back, elementary. Eight, tights and leggings can be worn under skirts and dresses that meet dress code. Shoes must be worn at all times, tied securely and firmly anchored to feet. No shower shoes, spiked heels, bedroom shoes, shoes with wheels, or slippers allowed. A removable jacket, sweater, or vest may be worn over another shirt, as long as the shirt worn underneath meets dress code. Neckline must be between top of chest and collarbone. Short skirts and dresses must not be shorter than the top of the knee in the front or back. Tights, leggings, and jeg, jeggings, jeg, I'm not sure what jeggings. Cannot be worn under skirts and dresses that do not meet dress code. That's CMS, George Washington Carver, and CHS only. Shirts must have sleeves, CHS boys only. Unacceptable for all students. No jerseys of any type except CHS teen jerseys on game days. Spandex or other excessively tight or snug fitting garments. Deliberately ripped or torn clothing with holes showing skin. Unbuckle upperalls, coveralls, headgear in tight, picks and combs in the hair. Extreme color hairstyle, makeup, etc., to distract the learning environment. Terry cloth tops or bottoms, no sweatsuits or sweatpants, now long wind suits are acceptable. See-through fabrics unless the shirt worn underneath meets dress code. Students wearing colored clothing or other paraphernalia lining them with a gang or unacceptable group is not tolerated. No sunglasses, this includes resting on the top of the head. Any accessory, item, or article of clothing advertising alcohol, tobacco, sex, gangs, guns, violence, drugs, or any item created in a hostile or disruptive environment. Pajamas or pajama light clothing, dog or spike accessories, chains hanging from pockets, no hats or rags worn in the building or buses. Wearing a hood from a hoodie jacket, no trench coats allowed on campus. Any jewelry that is distracting the learning environment, final approval of any questionable dress, and enforcement of the dress code is left to the discretion of the school administration. Consequences of dress code, one, change to appropriate dress code, warning issued and documented. Two, change to appropriate dress code, one day of ISSP. Three, change to appropriate dress code, two days ISSP. Full dress and discipline will apply for additional offenses. Administration discretion applies. Shirts are available, and administrators often do, will be given a shirt instead of calling home for a new one. That's the dress code.
Yeah. My point is, we eliminated all that stuff in that group. You know, putting on uniforms, the ministry job would be much easier. So, Dr. Murphy, how many cases have you had the last two years on dress code?
That, that don't, there isn't a good here, uh, maybe two parents.
How about you, Ms. Bear?
How many different, parents or how many student violations?
How many student violations?
Hundreds.
Ma'am?
Hundreds.
How about you, Dr. Murphy?
We do that with dress code every day, but I, if I could comment further about dress code, I think, we can start when we're addressing this issue, I think the main thing about, again, how does it impact student achievement? Because we address it when it is brought to our attention, we address it, and just like, you know, progression says, we try to correct the problem, and if it continues to be a problem with that particular student, you know, you go to the next step in the progression. But I, I, one of the things I always try to look at in dress code is, you know, overall dress code and uniforms or uniformity, because uniforms is one thing, everybody dresses exactly alike, or they're going to wear the similar colors. So there's a difference between uniforms and uniformity. So they can still wear, say, a certain color pants and shirt, or a certain color shirt, or is it gonna be a uniform like Catholic schools or something? So I think when we start talking school uniform, it's kind of a broad stretch, it's broad spectrum, and it's different issues there that, you know, have to be addressed, but my primary thing is, yes, we, to answer your question though, we deal with a lot. We do a lot, but, uh, it's not as much as it, as you would think.
How about you, Dr. Murphy?
If I ask a question, how many of us in here has consistently handled dress code problems in the run of a year, any year on school camps? How, how consistently have we enforced the dress code? And then I ask, how much time, uh, has it taken away from instructional level when we look at dealing with dress code issues? We're fighting not only a school system's, uh, situation, but we're fighting norms or, or, or from our society, from our culture. If, if we have a fad in our, in our culture, then I'm, I'm gonna mandate that my child's gonna come to school regardless of what's in that dress code, and we're gonna wear what society says we can wear. And when you deal with that from an administrator's standpoint, the person that stood the discipline area at your campus, he or she's gonna do a whole lot of time in the run of their mornings and throughout the day, deal with dress code problems. If we wanna minimize dress code problems, then it has to be a, a cultural change in our, in our community, not only from the head down, but from the down up to the top. Everyone's gonna have to change their mindset when it comes to the dress code, because if, if we don't, uh, cleavage, midriff, exposure of back, etc., it's always gonna be a problem. And when, and when you handle it the right way, then what you're gonna get into, you're gonna end up kicking some kids out of your school, because they're gonna defy authority just that much. And I'm not saying this thing that they might not agree to, because when you've been in it for a long time, you're gonna end up kicking a lot of kids out of school if you say, I'm gonna discipline you because you're borderline with your riches or whatever, you're borderline with your, with, with seeing through, seeing, seeing through your blouses, etc. It's a, it's a never-stopping battle. It's ongoing. It's not only here permeating in Coffey County. I, I, I've dealt with it in Glen County, I've dealt with it in Jasper County, I've dealt with it in Manuel County, I've dealt with it in several different counties. It just, this is not only a Coffey County problem. It's a, it's a, it's a state problem within the state of Georgia, especially when you have this Bible fest area right here, where people like, they can call somebody, get a call downtown, I'm gonna do what I wanna do. It's, it's a problem. It takes away from the learning environment when, when a teacher has to start his or her day dealing with dress code issues. And I'm, and I'm very, uh, supportive of, of having a dress code, but at the same time, I'm looking at the skepticism of how we enforce the policy. So that, that's where I stand on it.
Okay, how about you, Mrs. Sharon?
I don't have any dress code.
Yeah, uniform. How about you, Ms. Tucker?
Well, at elementary, you know, you may see very few in fourth and fifth grade because you just don't have that issue. You know, it's not a huge problem at elementary, because they're still under the, you know, the parents dressing, and picking out their clothes, and for the most part, parents adhere to what the handbook asks them to do.
And they have different body types.
They do.
Different body types in elementary and secondary.
I, I would like to, just, some, some comments from a different point of view, which is, okay, so I'm a student who dresses within the dress code. Okay. Come to school, take care of my business in a respectful manner, and you're gonna tell me I gotta wear something that you tell me I gotta wear? You're gonna get a pushback there. The other one is this, there's absolutely nothing stopping someone from dressing their child the same way every day and send them to school in a uniform. Nothing stopping them right now, if they're putting on a marine shirt, khaki pants, wearing that school every day that fits within our dress code. So, I think we've gotta take that into consideration too, if we're gonna implement something, that you gotta be ready for the pushback on the other side. Cause there will be. Cause they won't understand. Something to think about.
Well, I'd just like to add that, I, I think all the principals have, have pretty much hit it on the head, they're swaying too much time, uh, taking away from teaching and academics that is spent on whether or not the shirt, the shirt's right, or the dress is long enough, or the pants are too tight, or whatever, and, um, I guess I got in trouble more times because I, I wouldn't notice, or, I was just glad they were there. Come to school, you know, let's get started, and let's, let's, let's do some learning.
It's, it's one of the.
Yeah, and I didn't wanna be a fashion police, I didn't.
It's one of the takeaways, it's one of the takeaways in here, building self-respect for the students, do they, is there, is there some self-respect lessons in there? I mean, I, I think that goes a long way in how they express themselves and the way they dress as well, so.
Well, and, and this is, the, this is very ambiguous. I mean, whose discretion? You know, my, some people know me, I'm a little bit liberal, so, you know, you know, what isn't, you know, what is fine to me may not be fine to the teacher next door. That's, you know, you get into that kind of, or the principal, or assistant principal, or whoever's, it's, you know, who says it's good, who says it's bad?
All right. Well, that's the Uniform Survey. We'll come back next month with some more results and more discussion. FCC LA National Leadership Conference. Our group from the FCC LA is going to be attending the national conference in Washington, DC. I received a letter from the School Governing Council from Coffey High School and George Washington Carver freshman campus, and the chairman, Mr. Jeff Harper drafted a letter from the school council to the school board, and, uh, in his letter, he cites the expenses that FCC LA will incur attending this national, uh, conference. My favorite part of the letter was the second page. If you scroll down, you see the, why we're here, which is the children's, scroll on down, and I will say they're all dressed very well, looking very, uh, professional, and, uh, but that's the group that will be going. Uh, we've got one student who is running for the, uh, national office, a national officer in the, uh, national FCC LA organization. Last year, we contributed as a board, ten thousand dollars towards the travel for the group to go to Texas. This year, they're traveling to Washington, DC. This is a academic-oriented, uh, activity. These students take this class, they actually take these classes at the high school, at the ninth grade academy, and at the middle school, they begin the programming, so, uh...
You had middle students, middle school students attending.
Great. Uh, I've got Mr. Terry Robertson here, who, who is, uh, the president of the organize, of the boosters, the alumni association. You wanna add anything, Terry?
Well, it's, you, as you said, you hit it on the head. You got a good group here. I don't know if y'all read the paper where Daphne Bonaparte was... Uh, I don't know if y'all read the paperwork, definitely Ben, Bonaparte was here a couple of weeks ago, where we recognized some of the students at the exchange fund. Uh, Ms. Bonaparte is the state program director for the Department of Education. Uh, she thanks enough of these kids in this program here in Coffee High School. She drove all the way from Atlanta just to go to a lunch meeting. And she talked to me and Dominique and Ricky for a long time. She says she wishes you had more program planning than we have here. They need it very badly. These kids right here, I could go on to, I guess, Ben and I were talking about these kids. I pay my own way and all the, all adults go. I've been going for quite a number of years. So that thirteen, fourteen, fifteen hundred dollar per student is raised, they're trying to raise, I have to pay for myself. And I do it because I love giving to kids. When y'all see these kids grow up the way that I have in the four, now it's going to be six or seven years through the program. And you see some of the things change. I'm going to point at the front one right there. Uh, um, what's his name? Solomon Ramirez. He just got elected as the state president. Solomon, when he first come into this program several years ago. Uh, he has a lot of allergy problems, asthma problems. Uh, he got involved in the FCC LA. He still has those problems, but he didn't fit into the sports side of things, okay? He's one of those kinked up because of his health. Uh, he got involved into that. He is now the state president. Uh, he, he speaks very well. If you talk to him, he'll tell you the FCC LA changed his life dramatically. Rock side, him and the red dress is Rose James. That's the one that's going to be running for NAFTA office. She's actually a state officer now. When she joined the program nine years ago, I won't tell, I don't look, anybody knows her. She's extremely smart and intelligent and witty. Uh, she's way over my head when I go talk to her. Seeing these words, I still have to figure out what she's in on some kind of a say.
And her brother.
And her brother and, and her cousins and whatever. They, they're all extremely smart. I was talking to her one day and I asked her, why did she get into FCC LA? And, and I know this sounds kind of crazy, but this is how smart she is. She's going to go to Ivy League school. And she read a Princeton report when she had applied as a freshman or looked at it as a freshman. They said that they would not consider her at that time, even as smart as she was, because she wasn't outgoing nothing to the community. So she got involved. And not only did she get involved and try to learn, this is a girl who never put on any makeup, not just anything wrong with her makeup, some people are beautiful without it. Most people are. But she did fix herself up. She was kind of shy of talking to people. Now she's running for a national office. So this program is way beyond and just, when you hear people say, well, you want some money to go to nationals. These kids raise a lot of money. And I'm going to use Courtney Toth, which y'all, sure y'all saw in the magazine, who raised thousands of dollars through the school system, going to ask the people to donate to help child advocacy center. And anybody y'all knows about, y'all know what she did. That's money that she raised to put theirs. So then she had to turn around and raise thirteen hundred dollars to go to nationals to compete in the project that she's worked on all year. But that was her project that she went to nationals. Those projects that she's got are still affecting this county and will continue to affect this county in the future. Some one of the programs that's going to nationals started to close laws and, and started one of these several years ago with the freshman campus. But to show you how, uh, the difference it made, and it was Alexis McKinnon and Olivia, I can't remember Olivia's last name right now. But anyhow, both of those are going to nationals and their project was closed laws at Coffee High School. You don't think much of, y'all talking about uniforms. Let me, let me say that when we talk about uniforms. Somebody's getting a four uniform. That's just point blank. These kids don't have very many clothes. We had a girl come into the closet. The reason I noticed is that my closet gets raided pretty often when these boys come in there and decent. So I go looking for a jacket. I can't find it during the winter time. My boss giving it away. But there's a girl coming in there, she only, the teachers notice her. She's wearing the same pants every day. Comes to find out she only had one pair of blue jeans. So when she went into the clothes closet to pick out some jeans, she only picked out one pair, even though there's four or five. She thought that would be plenty. Two pair will be fine. We finally convinced her. We had two of their special niche girls that went to clothes closets that didn't have the dress to go to prom or wasn't going to the prom, that we gave the prom dresses out there that people had donated to us. And then FCC LA helped, uh, get them hairdos and nails and all that other stuff, whatever you call it, pedicure, manicure stuff. But they got them fixed up. So they're making a difference in people's lives. It is an educational thing. And if you get a chance, I wish that y'all as a board would let these people like clothes closet, somebody that's going to nationals, y'all let them come and talk to y'all and let them show you what they learned. And this is classes in the classroom that they have. You just can't go to nationals in this and just compete or something. You've got to be in a class with FCC LA through the, uh, Family Consumer Science classes in, in having in your program in order to compete at this at state and national level. So this is not something that they're just going, just to compete in, so to speak. And these kids have already raised a lot of money to help. So they're already at a point, and I, I'll say this, we've done the, um, Honda Forest for several years now. Well, every time that we do something, raises money, somebody else starts doing it. Well, this past year, they had like five different Honda Forests in the house in Durant County. So our income from that went from, well, last year we made over five thousand and this year we didn't even make a thousand. I think like five, six hundred dollars. We used to buy some butts and you can't afford to buy them, but you know, it's too high. So there's a lot of things that we used to do, and they still do a lot of things. These kids work all year long. For the last two weeks, for any of y'all that go to any of these honor things, y'all usually see me there because I'm helping them cook. But these kids are, are catering to these programs that are eating to help raise money and do these competitions, so. I know it sounds like crazy and I heard Mr. Box say something like they were about to put something in place. And I agree, you've got to have some things in place, but you can't have everybody asking for money. But I'm going to tell you, these kids benefit a lot and y'all have, y'all done a lot for the programs. The one thing I'm telling them now, because y'all have done a lot. And y'all have probably the one or the premier programs in the state. Really truly the nation. But I, I, I go to the nationals every year with them. I can tell you, everybody can't believe when we show up with the number of kids. I have teachers from other places say, are y'all crazy for taking that many kids off? No, these kids are great kids. And when you see them go off and y'all see, if this generation keeps going the way they're going, they're going to create all the stupid stuff that us adults have done. But you've got some great kids at the program.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate you being here.
We appreciate all you do.
Board, I'm prepared to ask the board to contribute the same amount we did last year, which is ten thousand, towards the travel for this group to the national conference.
What was, what was the, Terry, do you know the total last year of what your expenses were?
Last year was twenty something, it is again this year. It was on that paper, twenty, that's not counting the adult, but for the kids, it was twenty something thousand dollars.
How many kids did we have go last year when we did that?
It was close to the same as, I think last year was a hair over twenty. I think it's right at twenty this year.
Did we do, the reason I'm asking is, did we do fifty percent? Is that where the ten thousand number came from? Did we do, was that?
I think ours was more a charter thing or something.
Last year was a paper charter.
Well, that's what my, my deal is, is not, not, not about giving y'all money. I think we need to support this and, and do something. My, my deal is, we, you know, we've had other people asking for money. We need to come up with a, a set figure, you know, where somebody's going to a national competition, here's what we're going to donate. That way, not only are we keeping it fair, but you know. I mean, you know, you come here today, you have no clue what we're going to do, what we're not. We don't even know right now. Another group, you know, that's something maybe you can kind of have in your head, hey, if we raise this much money, the board will be, and that's what I'm saying. We just need some kind of a policy, you know, where we can be fair and everybody kind of knows what we're doing. Absolutely support what y'all doing, want to get y'all funds to go there. I'm just saying as a board, we need to get together. And come up with something where we're fair with everybody. And also, like I say, you, you may, you know ahead of time what we'll be able to do, so you can kind of plan as well. If it, if it's, need some pleasure, the board, I'm going to place this on the consent agenda. Could be approved on the consent agenda, ten thousand dollars towards the travel for FCC LA to Washington.
How long is this going to go on?
As far as?
Give them money out.
Well, we did it last year and we have done it now this year, so that's two years. I'll be honest with you, as far as when we get to the budget and the deficit budget, uh, this may be the last year that we can do this type of, of funding, uh, at this capacity. It's, uh, as you alluded to earlier, the state continues to, uh, have austerity included in our funding. Uh, and it, it's, we see the rise in healthcare costs, we see the rise in TRS contribution that we have to provide, so. To say this would go on indefinitely, I, I don't think that's possible. It'll be something we have to look at probably annually and determine whether or not we can do it. Well, that's, and that's what I'm kind of getting at. I mean, you know, if we approve this tonight, that's fine. And that gives them idea of what they can get accomplished. But at our next retreat or, or meeting or whatever, we need to sit down and come up with something that we can apply. And in that way, they, everybody knows from then on out what they can kind of expect too.
Well, one, I think one thing we did talk about when this first draft was, came up last year was, it was for, we kind of, we kept it at national qualifier. That was qualifier was, the only other option, the only other national situation we've had been the, was at the archery camp.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like we've handed it up.
And they've had to have skin in the game. They've had to raise funds and do stuff. And this group, I, I say is different in fact that it is a class. It's an academic oriented group. This is not an extracurricular, you know, this isn't the track team going off to nationals. Well, we can break, we can break that down in our policy. If we're academic, we're going to give this, for an extracurricular, we'll give this.
I think as long as they make it to nationals, which should be-
Well, that's what I'm saying, but we need to have something in-
This is really the only group we're doing this for, other than when y'all did contribute to the, the archery.
Right.
So we'll work on that, Mr. Watson. All right?
We hope you do well.
Good luck. All right. So you can place that on the consent agenda. Tentative FY sixteen budget. You see the attachment? We've already discussed some of the issues involved with moving into FY sixteen. This is the same budget, basically you were, we talked about it in our meeting a week, two weeks ago. We're asking the board to approve this tonight and we will advertise it Wednesday of next week. It will begin running, it has to legally run for two weeks in the paper. At the end of the two week period, uh, we can approve a budget for the coming year. So the board members, we're asking for a call meeting on May twenty eighth, uh, at twelve noon to approve this budget. So if the board approves tonight, we will run it in the paper for two weeks. And May twenty eighth, have a call meeting, that's a Thursday at twelve noon, to approve the final budget.
Thursday?
Yes, sir. Can y'all meet on that Thursday, the twenty eighth?
What time?
Twelve noon. Thought we, it's a short meeting, uh, just to approve the budget. We have formally adopted. We thought we'd do a new meeting.
Is Adam Ray, it will be separate under vote united?
It is. Is it separate?
It's in the consent agenda?
So it's just simply to run the ad?
Yeah.
Well, we need the tentative budget approved so that we can place that ad in the paper. And then the final budget will be approved with, you know, I mean, like, there would be no changes to what we're, you're looking at here tonight. We need to standard up in the final budget on the twenty eighth. If that's the date that the board decides on here.
So let's, let's do this separately.
All right. Really quick, Mr. Ray, that's where you go through, I know we've got general fund stuff, like special revenue funds, uh, SPOSS capital project funds, debt service funds, explain that a little bit.
Yes, sir.
What, what we're including in there.
Okay. Um, your special revenue funds are going to be, most of your title and grant funds that we're, uh, including, um, your nutrition account, which is all federally funded. So, uh, when you look at your revenues, that's eleven million five. And right now, we don't have, we're, we're pretty much using the funding that we had from a year ago that we knew what our federal funding was at that time. And then included with that would be what we budgeted or we think we're going to budget next year for nutrition. And then expenditures would be based on where that money is going to be spent. Instructional, obviously, is going to see the majority of it. And then a big chunk, obviously, down below there, under the school nutrition area. Uh, they, they project, uh, they put forward a balanced budget, uh, that we've looked at. And that's, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of four million nine hundred thirty-six thousand three eighty-nine. So, um, those numbers are very preliminary right now. There will be changes because once the Title I, Title II A, et cetera, start coming through with their monies for fiscal sixteen, then we'll, we'll be modifying those, those a little bit. The SPOSS column, is, is, any question about that?
No, that's what I really want to know is, is not about the numbers of what was involved in.
Right. The, uh, SPOSS and capital project funds is, is simply what we're collecting in the revenues area, what we're collecting on sales tax monthly. By and large, a little bit of other funding that might come through from either state and or just interest. And then just, uh, some estimates, some budgeted numbers of where we would spend either under construction or under construction largely, it's going to be either software or textbooks principally. Um, transportation, you can see five hundred fifty thousand, that's going to be buses. But, um, that category is essentially giving you a snapshot of what we're, we're thinking in terms of our spending for SPOSS. The last column, debt service relates to paying off the last payment of our bond issue that we currently got outstanding. Um, it's two million seventy-five thousand seven hundred. That last payment is due in August of fifteen. And we'll actually transfer that fund, funding to, uh, the bank, US Bank, uh, in mid-July so that they can have it available for the bondholders August one. So that takes care of, you know, handling that, that last bond payment. And then, of course, we are currently in the process of preparing the paperwork for the new bond issue on the SPOSS board that we're getting ready to do. And we're not projecting that that may hit in, in this fiscal year by June.
And that's what I was kind of looking at with SPOSS stuff. I mean, you know, you're showing the deficit there, but really we're going to show the deficit in the first few years, I would think, and that's SPOSS taking all that, waiting on the revenue to come in. So that's what I was trying to get my head around.
Okay.
Um, and then with the debt service side, I've got a better picture of that now. Uh, I've put it in the water and I've got to figure that out.
If I could highlight for the board, uh, right now, best projection I've got as far as our year end balance. If you look at that estimated fund balance July one in the very first column, that five million two hundred and five thousand dollars, that is what I'm saying will be at, at June thirty this year. With the deficit of a million seven seventy-eight, that would roll forward to June two thousand, June thirty, two thousand sixteen, to a fund balance of three million four twenty-six six seventeen. Um, nowhere close to the ten percent that we like to have that number at certainly. So, um, we, we've got some work to do for sure during this next year. Questions?
All right. If there's, uh, no other questions, I'll have that broke out as a separate item on the, the, uh, regular meeting. I just did that. So on the agenda for the regular meeting, that'll be a separate agenda item. And I did add the FCC LA to the consent agenda. Are there any other, uh, questions? We've got here executive session. It appears we will have time to go to executive session before the regular meeting. So, uh-
We're going to have Brian, the-
I just, I have, I think I already, I just, I can just real quickly, if I could on that, the proposals to the Governmental Operations Committee to amend two thousand fifteen legislative positions adopted by the Delegate Assembly in Savannah for upcoming, uh, GSBA convention. Uh, I'm sorry. These were adopted in two thousand fourteen, so. Basically this, I, I attended as our delegate on Monday up in Macon. It was a, a very well-run meeting. We actually started at ten thirty, we broke at noon. We covered, uh, many topics that, uh, we've asked George School War Association to take legislative, basically lobbying positions on. And, um, I will share those with the, the board at, at Vittles.
All right. And I wanted to, to ask the board, we've got the, we're going to have to respond to, uh, what course we want to sign up for on that Thursday. The communications workshop or the policy workshop? The communications workshop will deal with social media, public engagement, crisis communication. Learn more about the roles and responsibilities, board members to effectively communicate to all stakeholders. And the policy workshop- And the policy workshop will be dealing with how boards can proactively address some issues that are on the enforcement agenda of the US Department of Education and the Department of Justice. As to the best position to respond to OCR investigations and other federal interventions. Policy and legal concerns arising out of new laws passed by generals. We attended the policy workshop last year. So I wanted to get y'all's feelings on which session.
I think that communications piece is.
I thought so too.
I mean, I, we've got, we've got, we've got Mr. Cunningham for OCR letters.
They're going to be talking about the teeth and legs.
Thought we were going to leave you out.
How about Ken, the policy workshop? How we even know about policies?
Do we have to help Ken slide?
No, we don't. If y'all want to think about it and get back with me and just let me know which ones you want, if y'all want to look at this and take it and just in the next few days, if you'll let me know which one y'all want to go to. And we can either go all the way or we can split up.
I think it would be good to have something you want.
All right. Audience participation? No audience participation? All right. At this time, I would move that we go to executive session to discuss personnel, including the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, displayer action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation rating of a public officer or employee to discuss personnel.
Motion.
In a second.
Sir.
All in favor? Executive session. Excuse me. We're exiting executive session. And now we're going to call this meeting over.
Listen, General Work Session. Call the people.
Give me the. No, motion. Excuse me, you're still running.
Motion, General.
Second.
Any decisions? All in favor? No.